Okay. It is now six, what is it, thirty-three on the clock. I call the September tenth Planning Board meeting to order. First on the agenda is, as usual, public comment, and this has to do with something anybody wants to see brought up at a future meeting, but nothing that's currently on the agenda for tonight. Does anybody wish to say anything? Okay. Minutes, August twenty-seventh. Mr. Secretary.
Madam Chairman, I recommend approval of the minutes of August twenty-seventh, two thousand nineteen. That's correct.
Second. I moved in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have an approval-not-required plan. These are any received between August twenty-eighth and September tenth. The applicant is Paul R. Dupay, Jr. Plan of land to re-divide lots located on Adam Ansett Road. Maps, a map number is seventeen oh one oh one six oh three one comma oh three two comma oh three three. And it's BSS design. Is there anybody here to speak for the applicant? Now we've got a problem, because the Planning Board has a question on this. I don't know how to handle it, because our last meeting date is on the seventeenth and the deadline is September twentieth, and that doesn't allow us to act on this. That's true. Okay. The problem is, and I will describe it to the board.
Madam Chairman?
Yes?
Maybe we should just table this to see if somebody shows up.
Move to take it out of order?
Yeah. Or we can just move to table it, I think, for, and then we can bring it off the table if anybody shows up.
Or we can just take it out of order.
Well, we can just not approve it either. I don't care. I'm just saying we should give them, there might be a simple explanation, but...
I'm just confused by what it says here on the agenda versus what we see here.
Right.
Where it says, "re-divide," because we...
We already did.
Yeah, because...
In May of two thousand eighteen.
Well, we added, we added this chunk of lot sixty-two to sixty-three, but now it says "re-divide," so they want to take that back?
I don't know.
That's, that's...
There's nobody here to describe to us.
I'm going to move that we take this out of order.
Well, it's already, no, we have to table it, because we already opened it. So it has to be tabled.
Move that we table.
I'll second.
Okay. It's moved in seconded that we table this issue. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And you understand the issue as to why, so we may have to bring it back up and then just say, "Too bad. Can't do anything about it." Public hearing. This is continued. The applicant is the College Light Opera Company, Inc., site plan review application to construct a new rehearsal hall at administrative building, as well as the addition of a two-car garage to an existing student housing building at fifty-four Chappaquaite Road. Hoadley Martinez are the architects, and for the applicant, please.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Nickerson. I'm an attorney in town. Thank you for giving us an opportunity to present these plans again. So the board will recall that there's an existing inn at the property, and the proposal is to add a rehearsal space, which will also be administrative. It will also be a proposed garage. This is a property that the applicant has owned since nineteen seventy-eight, so they know it very well. So. College Light Opera Company is a community in which young artists have the opportunity to practice and perfect their art. Established in nineteen sixty-nine, incorporated in seventy-two, it's recognized as five oh one C three, and again, as I mentioned, acquired title of fifty-four Chappaquaite in nineteen seventy-eight. The Dover Amendment applies in this case. So Dover Amendment says that no zoning ordinance or bylaw will regulate or restrict the use of a property, but the land or structures may be subject to reasonable regulations concerning bulk, height, setbacks, et cetera. Falmouth Building Commissioner approved this use on March thirteenth. There are some outbuildings that serve as student dormitories that are at the property as well. This would be a new building, and one of the dormitories would have a garage added. Conservation Commission approved on July sixteenth, and the Board of Health has approved the new septic plan. The proposed new structure and the existing structures comply in every way dimensionally. Lot coverage were under, lot coverage by structure parking and paving were under, front yard setback well in compliance, side yard setback is well in compliance, rear yard setback complies, and the maximum height of the new structure is thirty-four feet, five inches. Thirty-five feet is allowed by code. The existing structure has been there since, I think about nineteen hundred.
Eighteen ninety-five.
Thank you. So it's, it's been there quite a while. Compliance with parking, it complies in every way. This use isn't something that we have a particular designation for parking under our zoning code. And so what we did was we took a look at what the I T E table said, and we figured that thirty-four parking spots would be required if we have ninety occupants, which is essentially the complement of the company and the staff. Forty-three spots are provided, so it's again well in excess of what would be necessary. All the buildings are principal structures. When I met with Mr. Palmer and discussed this with him, I submitted a letter to the file, I believe the first hearing, that talked about the Dover Amendment use, and he agreed. Based on the use of the property for a Dover Amendment use, I agree the use of the property described in the attached letter is a Dover Amendment use, and that each structure shown is a principal structure, and no special permit is required for construction of the Since the last hearing, we updated some of the plans. I know there's a lot going on, so I'll try to zoom in if I can figure out how to do that. I might need Cory's help on that.
Jeff, could you speak up a little bit?
Sure. Yep, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
So one of the concerns that the board had at the last hearing, and some of our neighbors had, were questions about the lighting. In particular, one of our neighbors was concerned that there was a light post proposed by student housing number three. We've taken that out as a way to try to reduce the amount of light. In the parking field, there were initially four light posts proposed. We've taken that down to three. We want it to be safe for the people on the site, but we want to be respectful of the neighbors, and so we heard the concerns, and we're trying to be respectful of that. Kimberly Mercurio is here tonight. She is the landscape architect who's working on this project, and she might be better suited to talk about some of the landscape aspects of it, but I wanted to bring these up so that they're available to her. Also here tonight is the architecture firm of Hoadley and Martinez. They are the ones who have prepared the architectural plans. Again, this is a rendering. They would be best suited to talk about some of the architectural aspects. You know, there are elevations that are available to show what it would be, look like, what it would look like at each of these respective viewpoints when you're on the property. And this is also a rendering that was produced to try to show what the building would look like, both in the summer and potentially in the fall and winter, when there's less foliage. So I hope this is responsive to what the board has requested and what our neighbors are wondering about. We're trying to be as straightforward and responsive as we can be.
Thank you.
So I don't know if the board has any questions.
The board. Does anybody here have questions?
I do.
Okay, Jim.
I think, I'm just trying to understand, I think the building inspector said they're all primary buildings. I'm somewhat confused on that, because normally you have a primary structure that has a thirty-five foot height, and accessory structure, I believe, has an eighteen-foot height.
Twenty-two now.
Twenty-two now.
What?
Twenty-two now.
Twenty-two now. It's changed, sorry. How can they all be primary? I know, that's what I don't understand.
Well, I believe based on the application of the Dover Amendment, you don't have to designate a primary structure. Each structure is allowed by right, which Mr. Palmer has...
So that means, okay, that explains why they're all primary then. Okay, that's what I, that's the part I was missing.
Sure.
Okay, I'm all set, because that was my only concern.
Yeah, I believe the last time we talked about the lighting elements, would you be able to go over that, please?
So I guess it's a question of which aspect of the lighting, because when...
The ground lighting.
Ms. Mercurio prepared this plan, and I'll try, Cory, can you remind me how to zoom in on, control plus. So it's a, it's a big site, and what Ms. Mercurio did in her revised plan was to try to depict where the light was going to shine. These are the low-level path lights. Again, up through here, low-level path lights showing essentially where the light is going to be shining. Couple of path lights. One, two, and three pole lights, which would be for the parking area. And that's essentially trying to be responsive to what we heard at the last hearing.
I think further, Paul.
There are pole lights there?
Yes.
Is that what you said? Are there low-level lights in the rest of the area?
Yes, they would all be pathway lighting.
Okay, thank you.
Looking at the lighting plan for the parking lot?
Yep.
Those, the circles are the coverage of the light in the parking lot? Is that...
It's my understanding, but if I may, I'd like to defer to Kim, who knows more about this than me.
You have to go up so that people in television land can hear you.
Hi, I'm Kimberly Mercurio, landscape architect. So these are actually illumination clouds, just to give you an idea of the dispersment of the light. Obviously, this is the pole, and the light would be concentrated most around the pole, but then it would disperse as far out as that cloud. So that was the reason of putting those, on that diagram, so that you could understand, like, how far the light would actually disperse.
So would it have an impact on the neighbors across the street?
That was the reason, just to show you, that should be, like, the extent of the light.
Okay. So my only, I don't say concern, but my thought is that you had four light poles there before.
Yeah.
It appears to me there's part of this parking lot that's not going to be lit because of the reduction from four to three.
Yeah, right.
And if they're not going to affect the neighbors across the street, I don't see the reason to reduce it from four to three.
We could add another one. I, you know...
You're doing this for safety purposes, and these are students, and...
I agree.
That would be my concern.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Pam?
So I'm a little curious about the cupola.
Cupola? I'm going to defer to the architects, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Is this mic live?
Yes.
Great. I'm Susan Hoadley. I'm from Hoadley Martinez Architects.
So I'm curious about the size of the cupola.
Okay.
And I'll start with that.
Okay. Would you like a dimension?
Yes, please.
This is Karina Martinez, who's assisting me with technical dimensional questions.
Part of my concern is, it looks to me, from the renderings, that it could almost serve as an additional room, if it is in fact nine by fifteen.
Can I allow Karina to provide the dimensions?
Sure.
The dimensions widthwise is about eight feet six, and I'm sorry, I need my glasses, by twenty-five, three inches.
Eight-six high by...
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I'm giving you the footprint.
Yeah.
So it's about eight-six wide, and then the length is twenty-five-three, and then you want to know the height from the ridge. From the proposed ridge of the primary roof to the top ridge of the cupola is ten feet.
Is there any access through the roof to the cupola?
No. Well, the cupola is open to below.
I'm sorry?
The cupola is open to the space below.
I can address that.
Really? Sure. Thank you. So there is no, there is no active access, meaning ladders or stairs or anything like that. It's simply open air to the space below, and there isn't any dedicated roof access either to the cupola space above, nor is there any floor area in the cupola above.
Okay. Great, thank you.
You bet.
Paul?
Now that answered my question.
My concerns have been twofold, and one is potential inadequate lighting in the parking area, which that's going to be rectified. I don't understand why you have the low light behind, I guess it's area three, one of the student dorms, there is no stairwell to there, there's yard behind it, and you've got two low lights there, and I don't understand the reasoning for that.
There are lights on the structure as well. They're motion-activated, it looks like, I wasn't out there at night.
But there's no pathway there. These are pathway lights supposedly.
If, if the board would like pathway lights, we can certainly add them in.
Okay. Well, there are no path, there's no pathway there, and you've got two pathway lights there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And then you've got a driveway that looks like maybe a parking area or something, and no lights. It looks like those two lights need to be picked up and put in the grass area.
Could you have them zoom in so we can all see where you're talking?
Yeah, I can't...
So...
Yeah, see, and look, you've got that number three there, and you've got, it looks like a gravel driveway with a couple of pull-offs and maybe even a parking area there by the housing. Then you've got those two...
Two lights.
Pathlights, no pathway, no stairs, maybe, well, there's a stairwell there, but no pathway for it to serve, but where you've got those pull-off areas, it surely looks like you would be better served to have the path, some pathway lights there, so you could see at dark.
This is a lawn area?
I know it's a lawn area.
But if, if you're, you know, wondering if we could put lighting up here, if that would be what the board would like, I'm sure that's something that we can integrate.
I think that's...
We can't hear you.
I'm sorry. If, if the board would like to have some lights up here, I'm certain it's something that we can integrate into the plan.
Pat, are you saying you think we should move the light from one to the other, because it's too close to the neighbors? Why is it there?
Why is it there? There's no pathway for it to illuminate. There's a grass yard there. Those two.
The one behind student housing number three.
So I doesn't, there's no formal path, but if you're out there, this is all lawn, and the students walk along here. That's why you put the pathway there. And we can easily put another, we talked about putting a pole light here, but there is lights on student housing number three, on the building itself that's lighting to this area.
Okay.
So out of respect for the neighbors, we thought that, you know, not too much light.
No, I understand that, but is that a parking pad there?
Here.
Where it says gravel?
Up here, yes.
Yeah. And so I don't, I don't know how the rest of the board's going to feel about that. And I have a further question about the lighting. It says it's dark-sky compliant.
Correct.
So first, what does that mean? And secondly, are these lights going to be on all night?
No, they can be on timers, so that they can turn off at, you know, ten o'clock at night, or whenever, I'm not sure exactly when the students come in, or is it late? You might want to respond to that. Mark Pearson.
Okay.
Hello, I'm Mark Pearson, Executive Director, College Light Opera. The students generally come home around eleven fifteen, eleven thirty at night, and that's currently, what we have now, is most of the exterior lighting is on a timer, so it comes on at dusk and stays on until about midnight, and that would be the proposed timeframe for these lights. What Kim was mentioning about the parking area, where it's labeled gravel driveway, that area is served, in my opinion, sufficiently from a floodlight that already exists on the back of student housing number three. Basically, if you see that staircase there, at the top of that staircase is a floodlight that already illuminates that area.
Okay. Thank you. What does dark-sky compliant mean in relationship, then, to the type of light? Both of them are labeled dark-sky compliant.
Right. It says designation in outdoor lighting industry that means that the lights aren't going, exposed to the sky, so there's usually some sort of, call it cap, so that all the light is going down.
Down. Okay. Thank you. Now, another concern that I have is, we can comment on the mass, and I'm sorry, but that second cupola should go away. That is huge. I can't call it a cupola. If you want to have a balance in the design of the building, you've got one on the rounded area, you can match that on the little piece that comes out to it, but that, that's not a cupola. Twenty-four feet long by eight and a half feet wide by ten feet tall? I can't call that a cupola.
And that's forty-five feet high.
Oh, yeah, that makes it go way up. But we, supposedly with a cupola and other ornamental things, we can't comment on it.
Well, I think I heard the twenty-foot demolition, size of it, I said, "That's not a cupola."
No, that's not a cupola.
It's twenty-five-three.
Twenty, yeah.
Twenty-five.
Eight by twenty-five, that's the size of a medium-sized house.
Yeah.
It might be too big for a small house.
And I would say, "We'll lose it." That's my comment on it. As far as I'm concerned, it serves no really good design element when I look at the building. As I said, if you want matching cupolas, fine, put it on the other little L coming out there, and make it the same size, make it matching, but don't do that. That is just a horror, I think. But that's me talking, sorry. So... Does anybody else on the board wish to make any comments?
The tour out there was very helpful, and the only thing that concerned me a little bit was the difference in elevation between the two floors. The drawing show finished floor elevation of seventeen feet for the new building, it does not show the elevation of the old building. And my understanding, there's stairs going up and then a ramp of some sort. Can you just clarify that particular operation? I was a little confused when I saw it.
Sure. So the existing elevation is about fourteen-four for the threshold of the inn. The inn is fourteen-four at the threshold.
Fourteen-four, so it's only three, two and a half feet or so.
Right.
Okay, so there are a lot of steps going up, though.
Yeah, the idea is to try to make it more...
It seemed to be much more different in the field, although I couldn't tell. So it's only two, two-six or something, okay.
Okay. John?
Could we ask the applicant to explain why the cupola is as large as it is and the design? Is it functional? Is there, it looks like there's a lot of windows there.
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to at least give them a chance to address it.
Well, we certainly can, but we were told it was just wide-open space.
Underneath.
Yeah.
Underneath.
I want to know why they designed it like that.
Okay.
Is there a functional reason?
It's a fair question to allow them to answer that.
Yeah.
It's certainly not decorative, so there must be a reason why it was designed that way.
To be so large.
Let's go to the, let's go to that photographic montage.
Yeah, there's a comparison.
So I certainly understand the shock. So I certainly understand the shock that is elicited by looking at a frontal elevation of that side. And I can certainly understand the question of the dimensional heft of that. And without an explanation, I imagine that that can, that that can seem arbitrary, but I welcome the opportunity to explain why it's like this. So, this is a, this is a, I won't even call it a rendering, I'll call it a diagram, okay, that shows the relationship of what you will see from Chappaquaite Road, looking very frontally toward the elevation of the building. Does my mouse allow me to travel around and point? Can you see that? Is that clear?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, I'm gonna back up a little bit, and I will get to the cupola question. So this is a street view that's a photo montage of pasted-together pictures that were taken along the course of several tens of feet last week, and then pasted in with the elevation that you'll see. So, the foliage, as you see, obscures the building and, in full foliage. And when the leaves drop off the trees in a few weeks, what you'll see is the image that's suggested in the bottom image. And that image is, we, we can certify that that image, corrected for perspective, is correct in relationship to the size of the inn. It's about a hundred feet from the street, and the cupola that you see from the street, right here, we believe to be roughly commensurate or match from the street view with the chimneys and other projections that come up from the inn. But I'd like to get back to your question about why the cupola is so big. The cupola is so big because the spa, the main space in, in the bill, in the, the main rehearsal space requires enough natural light admission, that we were trying to be both as green as possible. In other words, this is a project that is, that's very concerned with its environmental impact, so we're trying to maximize natural light. And to do so, we have a, we've got a large space that goes down in, deep into the building, and when that happens, you have a couple of choices. One is you make a long space that gives you the opportunity to have a lot of windows on it. And we believed that that would, would increase the mass, and we didn't like that. We didn't like the idea of skylights, because we felt that skylights would certainly not have fit into any vernacular that we wanted to be working with. But then, third, we imagined that if we get enough light in through this cupola, how do we get the mass down from the street? And the way to do that was to make it long. We had initially had it square, and it looked bulkier. So by making it longer, that long elevation of the cupola that you see in that other elevation is actually hidden behind the inn, where very few people will be able to see it. So we're taking the mass of the cupola, which would have been square, and we're elongating it and pointing it to the street where its mass is diminished. So that was the strategy to hopefully address what we appreciate your concern could be about the cupola.
John?
So on, on the rendering on the bottom, the cupola that we see there, that looks like it's a small one that's gonna go on the round part of the building, or is that in fact the one you're, you're describing to us? Right there.
This, this is what you would see from the street, and then the-
Of the, of the larger, uh-
This is the large cupola.
Okay.
That's a twenty-four by, or twenty-by-eight structure we're looking at.
You're looking at the eight-foot part of it.
Right.
Yeah.
The street. The twenty-four foot diminishes down into the woods and the very, much more back parts of the site. So when you look at that one elevation that's got a long, what looks like a, a much longer, much larger bulk up there, it's that, that actually occurs from a vantage point that very, very, very few people will see. It's in the back of the campus. This is, this is the elevation from the street. And then the smaller one, I don't even think if, I would, although you can't see it behind the foliage rendering I'm showing, it's about, it's smaller than this hand. Right about there. But, you know, our, our thinking was to make it subservient from the Chappaquaite side to the projection of the chimney on the inn.
So regarding, if I may, regarding the, the larger cupola that we're discussing, what is, what has been or is your vision for evening when the lights are on inside the building?
Great question. So we don't want this to be a lighthouse, okay? We don't want light to escape from the scupola. The scupola's purpose is to admit light during the day. It's not to transmit light at night. It will, on, on its inside, I'm, I'm actually gonna use this ceiling as a, as an example. There will be lights that, that point down into the space on the inside soffit, probably about six feet below the sill of the first window on the cupola, down below, okay? There will be ambient light in that cupola when all the lights in that space are on. So it will appear from a distance like an interior window that has inside lights on, okay? But it will not have a lantern inside of it that emits light from inside of it.
So you're, you're picturing a soft glow and not a, not a spotlight?
That's what we want.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's what we want. There won't be any primary light source in the cupola, so, yeah.
Thank you.
I can understand the, the length of it, given the fact that it's for light purposes. And as far as the design, dairy bonds were designed that way to have open space, so that you can have air inside. So I, I see it in, in that light. And I really don't have a problem with it, because you don't really see it from the street. And compared to what Hui's doing down in Woods Hole, this is, this is far, far milder.
Jim?
I think this is a serious issue, and I really believe, from the state-of-the-art that I've seen, that pasting pictures together with computer-generated designs I've seen on other things is really inadequate for me to even make a decision on what I see right now. I've seen many renderings done where you can look at it from almost a three-sixty degree, the computer fills it all in, and on such a serious issue when they're going ten feet above the building height and this size, I might be able to go for it, but I'd really like to see something better than what we're looking at. I mean, this is just pasted two pictures together. I don't think it's adequate-
Okay.
-for me to make a judgment.
There are five other votes here than just me, but I think this makes a mockery of our zoning bylaw that says thirty-five feet. You've got ten more feet going on to here in a so-called cupola. It's huge. Fine, I understand the lighting thing, but there are other ways to get lighting into this. And I know you said, no, 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 we don't want any of it. We want this. But this makes a mockery of the height of our zoning that is allowed by our zoning bylaw. And I understand, oh, you can't deal with decorative things. This is not a cupola. Never would I ever call this a cupola.
Well, it's, it's semantics. I mean, it, it could be, to call it a cupola, or I don't think that's the right term.
No.
I mean, it, it isn't the right term for it.
It's part of the building. It increases it to-
It's part of the building.
Forty-five feet tall, Bob.
It's part of the building.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So now, the building is forty-five feet tall, and we only allow thirty-five feet under our zoning bylaws. Where are you getting the forty-five feet?
Not to-
It's ten feet tall. The cupola is ten feet tall from the ridgeline.
Above the ridge. They testified that it was-
It's ten feet.
It was tested on the ridge.
Thirty-four, five, twenty-five, three by eight-six.
So that makes the building forty-five feet tall.
Okay, when I, when I looked at it, I thought it was thirty-five.
No, 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 no.
Okay.
Nope.
If I may, I know the board is discussing. In our zoning code at two forty thirteen, it says height limitations shall not apply to TV antennas, chimneys, spires, or minor extensions to the structure ornamental or nature.
Not ornamental. That's my argument, and the rest of the board can overrule me. But this is not ornamental. It's part of the structure, and it has a function, which is lighting. If it were ornamental, it'd be purely ornamental. But no. So I'm sorry, folks. This is a negative vote on my part, and I don't know how the rest of the board is going to feel when it comes time to vote on this.
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to see a more accurate rendering of it, of what it's actually gonna look like.
From a couple of different angles.
Mm-hmm. Right.
You're saying, okay, you won't see it behind the tree, but there's a neighbor behind it. There's other views behind it. We're very limited with what you've provided us, and I can't vote for it based on what I see tonight.
I can't vote on it just because of our zoning bylaw.
Right. I might, I might agree with you, but they're trying to convince us, well, you really won't see it from the street. It looks even smaller from a distance. But I think they could do a far better job with the, from what I know, with state-of-the-art renderings than pasting two pictures together.
Um, have we had our say here and-
Yeah.
-gotten answers and made comments? And so I'd like to go to the public, please. And when you have questions or comments, please come up and state your name, because our viewing audience can't hear you if you don't.
Can we get these out of the way so we can, I can actually look at what, because I can't see what's on the screen.
We don't have that in front of us. It's only available-
We, we have elevations.
Yeah. Buster?
I, I, I wanna look at elevations.
I think looking at elevations is beautiful.
Pardon?
I'm Caroline Constant.
Okay.
And I've spoken before, and I want to thank you for listening to us.
Okay. Now I see it. I can't, I can't see the screen.
I was gonna start with the site plan, questions about the site plan, and go back to the building. Would you prefer me to go to the building, since that were-
However you want to do it.
Seems to be. Okay, so the site plan. I'm wondering if the wider access for the fire trucks has been provided along the harbor to the back of the barn. It doesn't look different to me from the earlier site plan.
Can anybody give an answer to that question?
That is an area that's within conservation jurisdiction. If it needs to be widened, it would be something that we would have to take up with conservation, because the conservation approved the plan as it was presented.
But you're talking about fire suppression.
The fire department.
Did any brought up the access for the fire truck, and it needs to be wider than it was indicated on the, you brought it up.
How do we resolve that issue?
If, if we need to respond it, we can certainly depict a, a widened area on the plan, but it would be subject to the approval of the Conservation Commission.
It's not our problem.
Okay.
The, there was a dumpster, I'm, I'm speaking for some of the neighbors who couldn't be here. There was a dumpster that seems to have been moved from the site plan. I'm not sure where it's been moved to, or where the screening is provide, and, or, or indicating where the screening is provided to hide the dumpster from view.
Can somebody answer that question? Because that's all in part of our looking at the plans.
The, the site plan hasn't changed since it was initially submitted. I'm not sure where the location of the dumpster of concern is.
I understood it was back in here somewhere on, on an earlier- But I don't think it's there anymore. I'm just wondering where it comes. It would be-
So the, the, the drawing was dated January twenty-two.
Because the neighbors live here. I'm, I'm speaking for the neighbors who live right behind the building, at this point, who couldn't be here today. And they're concerned about that. They were concerned that it issued an earlier calling. There was a view directly to the, to their house, to the dumpster, and now there doesn't seem to be a dumpster there.
Okay, that would need to be added to the plan, Jeff, and it's not there. Because that is part of what we look at, site plan review.
Right. Um, don't, isn't wheelchair accessibility required to the building?
Far as I know, it is.
I don't see it anywhere.
Should be ADA compliant.
Excuse me?
Should be ADA compliant.
There's a ramp. I see a ramp.
There was a ramp.
There's a ramp designated on the plant. I see.
We incorporated a ramp on the existing inn, if you can look just north of the existing inn.
So you get from the existing inn into where you're going?
You, there's a ramp that allows you to get from two handicap parking spots to the handicap ramp that brings you up to the existing inn porch level, and then you take that to the inn. I mean, to the, to-
There's stairs between there.
Yep, I get there.
I'm sorry. If you can take a look.
This is missing an elevation. That's why I didn't see it. It's missing the, the elevation. It shows the side view of this.
First one, it takes you from the parking lot, get you to the porch level of the existing inn.
Yeah.
And then once you get to the proposed rehearsal barn-
Okay.
-there's another ramp, just to the east side of the building.
So looking at that, I guess.
It does. It's right here.
It does. I see it.
It's right here. So, that's, well, you can't see-
Oh, that's a-
Yeah, ramp one.
Go, you can go into the planning office and look at that in more detail. But I thought I had seen a ramp as well.
And it says ramp.
Here and here. Park here.
Um, I think this has been voiced before about adequate protection, both during construction and following, for the planting around the bird sanctuary at the pond. I don't-
They have to do that. It's conservation.
That's conservation. Okay, thank you. Um, the, there's a proposed restoration Area Three. What is being proposed? This is not my question. I'm just conveying it. What is being proposed?
When I looked at the plan, correct me if I'm wrong, but the restoration is, certain of the plantings have to be taken down during construction, and they will be restored after construction.
Okay. And also selective removal next to the existing kitchen and by the pond. What is being removed?
Please answer that if you will. You have to come up. Somebody has to come up to the microphone.
This is not my question.
Oh, okay. If you can point to what-
I'm conveying it. So Area Three, down-
Yeah, okay. Um, if you look at, let's see if I can move this. So there's a planting list here where it shows you which areas and what plants. So that'll tell you which trees, shrubs, and which area are restored, and how many trees and shrubs in each area. So I hope that answers that. And then you also had another area along the pond here. I'm not sure which one. But you should be able to just key it in by whichever area you can.
And I would suggest that you or your neighbors go to the planning office and take a good detailed look at this.
Right, right. Yeah, there are other plans.
Is the parking lot screening sufficient to account for being cut back by utility companies? Uh, because the lot is, is indic, the parking lot is indicated as being between five and ten feet from the main road. Five feet's not much.
Most of it is natural vegetation that's currently there.
Okay. Do they, do you anticipate extra parking in the leaching field? And if so, how is it to be screened? Like run all, you know, extra events they're talking about?
You can answer that, but there are ninety parking spaces, or-
Parking lot is a change, and the dimensions of the parking lot will change.
There's a formula that they use to determine the number of parking spaces necessary.
So then to the building. Um, I think we would be very happy if the, if the cupola were taken down. I think that the only drawings that really show the relationship of the two buildings to each other is if you put the elevations side by side, an overlapping elevation that actually shows, a site section that actually shows- a site section that actually shows what it looks like, would really help that question. The.
Can we, we have the.
So this drawing, just because of the weird angles.
So I think, I think what the neighbors are concerned about is the massing of the building and how, I think you can really see in this drawing. First of all, as far as I can tell from the drawings, there's a seven-foot mound that the building's sitting on, which makes it a lot higher.
And that's, you're, you're right, because we have to, for FEMA, we have to raise the finished floor elevation to be at elevation seventeen.
Right. So I'm just saying, what that does is it makes this building, it makes this building sort of dwarfed by the new building, which seems.
They're equal, whatever. I don't really understand that law. But, but that, together with the extreme verticality of the windows in comparison with the existing building, and the cupola, all make it seem much bigger and more massive than the existing building. And it just seems like it's two enormous buildings next to each other, which seems kind of problematic.
Also, this drawing, they're.
You know, anybody out in television land is having a real problem hearing you.
I'm sorry. But, so the, the steps here aren't shown in that drawing?
There's two runs of steps shown in the plans. So all of that, just, all of those things, the verticality of the windows, the elevation which might be necessary, and the steps going up to it, and the cupola, all make the building look more massive than I would say it has to be. And I think this has been a, a problem for us. And then, I don't know if this is your purview, but a neighbor has a question about what are the purpose, what is the purpose of the three garage doors shown on the barn facade? If they're to be opened during rehearsals, performances, or other functions, the noise level will be problematic.
That's, that's functionality, and that doesn't come in the site plan.
All right. I think that's it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in, if she's covered all of your questions, fine, but if not, please come up.
I'm Susan Silby. I live at one four five Old Dock Road. I'm in Butter. So I have similar concerns, but they haven't all, and I apologize for the dark glasses, because I forgot my other glasses. So I'm not meaning to hide. Okay. So one of my, I very much appreciate your attention to the size and height and bulk of this building. By calling it a cupola, we have a little bit of, might I say, misrepresentation, and I appreciate it. Something which is eight feet by twenty feet by ten feet falls under no recognizable cupola. And I think if you did some reviewing of what is available in architectural drawings and materials to buy, it would not fit. And as such, it vi, does violate the zoning laws in Falmouth. And we've, we have a little slippage here of trying to get around the Dover Amendment by claiming that everything is in compliance. But as I'm sure you know, that the Dover Amendment allows you to make a decision as to the bulk of a construction. And that supposed cupola of raising the roof is not a cupola, not only by what I said, by what is normally, but by the explanation we were given that it's for light. Cupolas are not functional. They are decorative. And if this is for light, by definition, this is not a cupola. And so you have a problem here. It's either for light, or it's decorative. And if it's for light, is one thing to want to be green, then I'll ask, is this going to be a LEED-certified building? If you wanna be green, you be LEED-certified. And I don't think you wanna spend the money for LEED certification. Is it going to be?
I'm a LEED accredited professional.
I understand that. Is this going to be LEED-certified? Okay. That's the point. Second, another point on this. If this is for light, and yes, using this as an example, with down lighting in this space, look how white that ceiling is. Not simply because it is painted white, but because of the reflections. This is going to have a giant light over the neighborhood, over a residential neighborhood. We're going to have, well, twenty, forty, and seventeen. We're going to have fifty-seven linear feet of glass lighting in the neighborhood. Okay? That's what, aside from all these other lights that you want them to put in, which I don't think they really want to put in, and the neighbors are with them. This has never been a well-lit area, and it ought not to be in a residential neighborhood. So that's the issue of the bulk and the lighting. Okay, so now let's go to the bulk again. The claim that they are in compliance because it's less than twenty percent of the acreage. But as one of our colleagues tried to point out last week, it's only tw, and if you'd put up the drawing of the whole plan, could you put up that picture? Could somebody put the picture of the whole site? You will see that it is not twenty percent of the area if you eliminate the pond. It is most of the area when you eliminate the pond. And the pond, for sure, is not buildable. And so to claim that this is twenty percent of the land is just not a true statement. Just look at the density. It is more than half, or maybe it's half pond. And it's all built on, everything but the pond and the leaching field. So let's be honest. Nobody builds anything on a pond. So the buildable space is this land without the pond. So the other issue is acoustics. If this is a large space with a raised roof, what are the acoustics going to be like? Now, we happen to like listening to the rehearsals. The neighborhood, nobody minds it. Nobody minds it. But they're gone at the theater at night. And why is it gonna be lit up? Okay, now let me just see. Okay. Now, as for this issue of the restoration of the pond, I realize that it is not your jurisdiction, that it is the COMCOM's. But there are areas on this site which are your jurisdiction, because the COMCOM says it is not theirs. So if you look at the furthest-most east part of the drawings, where these, the trees, along Chappaquaig Road, that's your jurisdiction, it turns out. COMCOM says it's not theirs. It's beyond the hundred feet that they control. And that, if you look at the furthest-most east part, where they say there's going to be a grassy meadow with a few trees, this all is going to be exposed to Chappaquaig Road now. What is now invisible beyond the brush that is there, which is not beautiful, to be honest, is going to be a set of, is this gonna be, you know, a set of tr, t, tree trunks? What's going to be obscured by a set of tree trunks? And what is gonna be the size of these trees? How old? And who is going to take care of them? Because certainly, this is not a property that is taken care of for the last twenty-five years that I've lived across the street. There is no funds to take care of it, at least that's visible to the neighborhood. So this meadow, why is it a meadow? Why isn't it shrubs that will obscure the parking lot? And that's your province, not the Conservation Commission's. So we are going to be now exposed to a parking lot in a residential neighborhood when we never have been. All the mess that is back there has been basically invisible to the neighborhood. And now it's all going to be exposed. And so, yes, it is the Conservation Commission's responsibility to make sure that the, the shrubbery and the, the gra, you know, the shrubs and the plantings closer to the, to the bank is theirs. But the rest is yours. And who's going to protect all that during the construction? You've got a division of labor here, which allows things to slip through, and the neighbors are the ones who suffer for that. Let me just make sure. We had a lot of complaints from neighbors, and we've just, or questions, and we've been trying to collect them. The other point, which I, I'm not sure whether Caroline raised, was the town clear cuts along the road. They clear cut per, once, sometimes twice a summer, but mostly once. If they're, if these plantings are closer to the road, or I don't know, there'll be no screen. They'll just clear cut them. And if it's just grass, and then the trees, as I said before, it's all gonna be bare. There'll be no screening. And as a residential neighborhood, we will now have an enormous, tall building with a parking lot displayed in what was a very quiet neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who has something new and different? Please come up. I'm asking for new and different because.
Hi, my name is Kathleen Leonie Sealy. I live at seventeen Chappaquaig Road. I just wanted to talk about the lighting. I know that we talked about eliminating a post in, or a light pole in the parking lot. And then it was asked that it be added back in. After our meeting a couple of weeks ago, I drove by clock that night, and there are only lights on the building at the doorways, as i, as is in most residential neighborhoods. So I'm really concerned about how much lighting there's going to be. We didn't really talk about anything but the light poles and the, and the, and the lights around the pathways tonight. I know that a couple of weeks ago, when we were here for the meeting, there were lights all over the building. There were different kinds of lights. There were two different kinds of lights that were going to be on the building, you know, at different intervals around the building. So it's not just the pathway lights. It's not just the parking lot lights. There's lights all around the building. And I'm really, really saddened, because I don't know whose purview this is, but there are all these birds that come to the pond at night, walked by there the other night. They're all in there. What are the lights gonna do to the wildlife? I don't think that COMCOM gets involved with lighting. They only get involved with the plantings and protection of the water, that sort of thing. But these lights are really going to affect the wildlife. It's gonna be confusing to them. It's a dark pond at night. There's no lighting around there. And now we have lighting on pathways. This is where the dumpster was. This, this section here is where the dumpster is. This is a walkway here. Nobody walks, walks back here. There's a little bit of a shower here, an outside rinsing station, I think you would call it. But nobody walks through there, because when you get over here, it's kind of gross. Because there's a dumpster there. That's sort of the kitchen area. I think the dumpster's very close to the pond. That's a concern. And I, I don't know why we have so much lighting. And yes, we can have it on timers, but who's gonna maintain it? Is, is somebody really gonna be on top of that? And what happens when, you know, clock's done now? What happens this time of year? Are all those lights still gonna be on even when the building's not used? I don't know. But we can only talk about it now and ask that they be responsible about it. But what happens in the future, as those lights are illuminated at all times of the night and all seasons of the year? That's what I'm concerned about. But I don't know if somebody could take a moment to talk about the lights around the building, not just the pathways, if you wouldn't mind?
Too bad.
It just seems like too much.
We used to.
I already pinned it all up.
Oh, we're still here, but.
Do you have it electronically? Do you have electronic, sorry? Problematic. The employee's available electronically to the facility a couple of weeks ago? Can you go to that site?
You showed it a couple of weeks ago.
You did. Yep. Yeah, it was on the building.
It is a requirement. It is a requirement to have them electronically.
Tom, timers, you mean?
No, the drawings are supposed to be.
Oh, the drawings, sorry.
It's a requirement to have them electronically.
Yeah, so we made a dedicated diagram of what kinds of lights would be everywhere specified everywhere. And I'd like to take you on a walk.
Yeah, we, we can specify that on the buildings, they all be downlighted, and they need to be.
With the dark sky ordinance, don't they all need to be downcasting?
We don't have a dark sky ordinance, but we are.
We don't.
Moving towards that, I believe.
And they've already testified, there's floodlights that come from the building that come way out into the parking lot. We've heard that as testimony already.
We did, tonight.
On one building, but the parking lot is very far from the buildings.
The parking area, I should say, not the parking lot.
The parking area, there was a parking area by one of the buildings.
With the floodlight that covers it from building three, forty, fifty feet away.
But not the main, which is in the, which is in the.
So it's, it's quite obvious that what you're looking for is for us to take a much closer look at the lighting and make sure it is all downlighting and not broadcast out.
We're gonna be showing specific fixtures.
Well, you did already, and we've got them right here. The specific fixtures, but that has nothing to do with what is on the current dorms that are there that was testified to us tonight, that that particular parking area was floodlit by, from lights on the second floor. And so it was not felt that any additional lights were necessary. Now, those already exist.
You went through and you showed the actual lights, like you had the cut sheets.
And those are motion sensors.
Here's the, here are the.
This is not a.
Here's the pole light.
Talked about how many lights there were on the building.
So the, the thumb drive that I brought with me tonight didn't have my set of plans from the last hearing. But I do have those in me.
This is very illuminating.
Which we can certainly show you.
I can refer to this and show you all location on the screen, what lights are where.
I think we have it on a plan here. But what we don't have is what's on the already existing buildings. And that's what has caused some concern right here, is that there are floodlights pointing out to that parking area. And so it was thought that no of the path lights would be necessary there, because it was already illuminated. And so that is the concern, that all the lights be dark sky compliant.
Each of the lights that we specified on the, the new building have shields and ballast that came from, from vertical line escape.
And that was understood.
Yeah, my, my concern is, when they did the presentation, it wasn't just these pathway lights, that there were lights all over the new building, and that there were two different types of lights. And it seemed to me that they were at different intervals all around the building. That seemed quite excessive. That's my concern.
That, no. Around the new building, there are only three pole, pole lights, and those are in the parking area.
I'm not talking about the pole lights. I'm talking about the lights that are installed on the building.
Okay, there was nothing testified to us about the lights that were on the building, just path lights?
I saw the cut sheets. I saw the cut sheets, and I remember the cut sheets and talking about two different kinds of lights that were going to be on the building. And that's my point is, we've only talked about the poles and the pathway lights. We haven't talked about the lights on the building.
Thank you for bringing that up.
I'm sorry.
Would you like me to take you on a walk through that?
Jeff, that's not, that's not gonna help anybody.
It won't help.
This'll be my guide.
Okay, but you know, it's totally useless for me. I'm gonna have to come up and stand there, because you don't, you didn't bring the. I'm gonna have to come up and stand there, because you don't, you didn't bring the drawings. That's inadequate. I can't see that from here. People can't see it at home. It's a private presentation to the neighborhood, but that's what, I'll come up and stand there if that's what you wanna do, but that's not right. Can't see it.
I think we're not ready to proceed on this part.
Yeah.
We need to have a far better understanding of all the lighting.
I can take you on a five, if you like, I can take you on a five-minute tour with a plan that explains each of the different types of lights in groupings around the building, and if you'd like.
The problem is, we can't see the buildings, and nobody at home can see it, so it makes it really difficult.
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah. Well, when I, realizing that we're missing the elevation, and I thought that was the thirty-five foot height. Yeah, yeah. No, I agree with you now.
So because of the seven foot?
Seven foot, yeah.
Plus forty-five feet.
I'm done, but I just wanted to say thank you for listening and taking our concerns, you know, into consideration as we go forward.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who has a particular concern that has not been expressed tonight? Okay, I have another concern, and Jeff, you may have to answer this, I hope you can. The clock has, what, a three-month season, and they're educational, so they're covered under the Dover Amendment. But it was also expressed, and I believe expressed in the newspaper article, that there most likely will be other uses that take place over potentially the whole year. And at what point does the Dover Amendment cease to have any validity if three-quarters of the year is used for other venues and not clock?
So, in the letter that was submitted to the Building Commissioner, it was...
Yeah, you have to speak up, Jeff. You have a very gentle voice.
Sorry. In the letter that was submitted to the Building Commissioner, it was detailed that the primary and dominant use of this property is going to be education by clock. And that's a standard that's been well-established under Massachusetts case law. The primary and dominant use must be education. Might there be alumni gatherings during the off-season? There may. Will it be used by clock as administrative space in the off-season? It certainly may. But the primary and dominant use of this property is education. And that's been understood and agreed to by our Building Commissioner.
And as I recall, I think that it was thought, hmm, there might be other uses that were not educational. I don't know what proportion of the year. I'm asking proportionality. I don't think I would dispute at all that clock is definitely educational. And I wouldn't have a problem with, personally, with administration residing there over the course of the year. But I might have a problem if, say, another fifty percent of the year were wedding receptions, weddings, parties of other sorts, and how is that going to be determined?
So it's not the intent for this to be a venue of that nature?
Will that be in clock's bylaws? Because there's no control over what might evolve unless there's something like that in place.
Is that in our purview? I mean, the Building Commissioner's a zoning officer.
He is.
I think he makes that determination. I don't know if that's part of our purview or not.
Well, it determines, John, I'm trying to get to how our site plan review is truncated by the Dover Amendment, and when the Dover Amendment ceases. That's, you're right, that's not part of our purview, but it is, in a way, when does something else take over, so it's no longer...
I think we'd have to get that clarification from either the Building Commissioner or Town Council.
You're probably right.
I don't think this gentleman's the right person to ask that question of.
Thank you, and I agree. That's why I said I don't know whether he could answer it or not. Thanks, John.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Okay, we're all okay, but we brought up a number of issues that have to be clarified, and, ooh, let's see. Yeah, well...
Pat, I just thought of one thing. We might clarify. This dark sky has been identified for all the new lighting. How about dark sky for all the lighting?
And I don't know...
Including the existing lighting.
And I agree.
And that would change my feelings about the lighting.
We've got a problem here with meeting dates, because our next regular meeting is September twenty-fourth, and that's the deadline for the decision on this. So we have to have an extension.
I'm sure that we could submit a waiver if that's necessary.
Well, it has to happen.
Yes, ma'am.
And you would have to bring that letter into the planning office, requesting an extension.
Sure.
And considering everything that has come up tonight, we have zoning articles probably on October first, October twenty-second. I mean, we'll have a regular meeting on the twenty-fourth, so we can deal with that, but it may be that you want to request an extension. Again, Tom knows all the details of how long. Cory, I was saying that we need to have an extension.
We do have the lighting plans.
I'm sorry?
We do have the lighting plans on this thumb drive, if that's something the board would like to see.
Do you wanna see the lighting plans?
I mean, that'd be for home, because I got it in front of me here.
Okay, might as well. Thanks, Cory. But they are gonna have to give an extension, Cory?
Sure.
Provide some direction for them going forward?
Well, I think they've been taking enough notes. Dark sky lighting, lose the cupola.
Lose the height, yeah.
Those are two big ones right there.
Yeah.
Because the lighting is a problem throughout.
I'm concerned about the lighting and the creatures of the night. I don't wanna see them displaced. And light can do that.
Totally.
I mean, our purview is safety, but, I mean, are we mandated to make sure that they have lighting on paths, or...
Well, why is there lighting here, simply because it's a yard?
Right, but there's lighting here.
Right.
I'm just wondering how much lighting we can require.
Okay, now we've got the lighting up here, and that will be presented.
Great, okay. So this is a plan of the building, and it's got four different lighting types on it. These different colored dots represent the quantity of light fixtures, which, when you look at this diagram, appears like it's just covered in lights, but I'd like the opportunity to explain exactly what each one of these fixtures is, in the hope of allaying concern that it's overly lit. So the red, the red type is, well, yeah, the red type is a northeast lantern. It's literally a residential light, okay, that is a watt LED. So it's, you know, it's something that you would have on the front of your house, and we've got six of those over the course of the front elevation. The next type is, again, it's got the guard on it to prevent from upward light. We're really only just looking to illuminate the areas around it for student safety and accessibility. And this light is nine watt LED, but it's got the striated bulb on it, which will dissipate the light escape that it creates. So the area that it illuminates will be smaller. And that occurs at the locations that are shown in the green dots. And this one's important, especially for the neighbors that are joined in the back of the building. These orange or yellow dots, these fixtures that are about this big, they're little discs. They're mounted about three feet off of the pathway, and they've got this shield that literally creates a ground wash around it. So essentially, on the entire, on this end, and then all throughout the back, these lights are there to just illuminate the periphery of the building, and they will be on timers. Probably invisible from most vantage points until you get pretty close to the building because of the little shield that's around them.
There is a blue rectangle, the second one down, where, oh, you just brought that up, thank you.
Okay, great, good timing. So this is a barn light on a gooseneck. The, if you look at the section of this light, there's no, the bulb itself sits up in the fixture, so there's no vertical light escape or horizontal light escape. And this occurs in the spots that you see on the drawing here, and that one is a twelve watt LED. I've just installed this on a shed, and it is literally, literally just creates a ground pool of lighting around it. So I hope that diagram was helpful.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Could you explain what light will be shed on the, I didn't mean that to come out that way, what impact will the lights have on the pond?
Let's look at the site plan to answer that question. All together?
Yeah.
Seems a little excessive, all those outside.
And then I'll get to...
You only need to by the doors.
Well, I, well, I guess we kinda have to do this one at a time. There it is. Yeah, so those are the little, those, anything, anything that would impact the pond are these. Little discs would have... So I don't think that the impact, we were careful about that. This is...
Yeah.
Okay, please.
I'm trying to understand why you have so many lights in such a linear space and so many different kinds. Could you explain the functionality as well as the aesthetics? I mean, if I counted by linear feet, it's as many or more than what you have in a room like this. Why is that? Are you planning to have evening events here so that people don't fall? Is that a liability thing?
So the reason for the sheer quantity of lights is because these are not strong lights. And the, you know, when you do a lighting design, you do a few very strong lights to create illumination and safety, or you create, or you use a larger quantity of them. The reason for all the different types of lights is that we were careful about only illuminating very specific areas that needed to be illuminated, because no one on the board wanted to create a Disneyland with this. And if we, if we, I can speak to your specific question about why each specific type by saying that this type is the absolute most minimal fixture available to create safety in the back of this building.
That's clear. It's the front of the building.
This is only a nine watt LED. And it's also got the striated glass, which creates the, which limits the light escape. And that's what we created for the most heavily-used areas, which would be the front of the building. Then, these are decorative lights, okay? These are our front door lights, which will illuminate the front door and what we think of as the front of the building. And then the last type, pardon me if you'll let me finish.
I didn't say anything.
Please, yes, I understand. Is the, are the, these downlights, which are these barn lights, which are meant to create solid pools of light where we think we'll be using the building most, which is at the entry and at the biggest feature spaces.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. If I might say something? I live directly across the street. I am, you know, twenty-five feet, whatever the width of the road is. There are not evening functions for the last twenty-five years. If this is a rehearsal space, why do the entrances need to be so well-lit unless they're going to be evening functions, which would be, and I know you can't deal with function, it's not, but what is the purpose of this construction? These are all indications that people are gonna be coming in and out of these three doors, which were described at some earlier hearing as just for scenery to be moved in and out. That's hardly about scenery.
Thank you.
There is, as Kim kindly pointed out, a very, very important point to make in answering the question, too, which is ADA access. Illuminating this path of travel is critical, from the end that we articulated earlier. And the quantity of lights that's on this area right here is there to illuminate that ramp. There are two, there are three types of ways that you can safely illuminate a handicap ramp. One is with a light post, one is with really good illumination on the building, and one is with lights that are in the actual light posts themselves. That's what we originally specified. But when we looked at what that would actually look like, we felt that it would give you the sort of like runway effect, which we didn't think was in, you know, that had a very nice, we didn't think it had a very nice regional feel to it, so we decided to put these other lights on the surface of the building itself instead, which would do double duty with giving you safe access up those steps and lighting up the handicap.
Could you put all of them up at once, please? How many lights per linear foot? How many lumines...
This is way too much. Go into the planning office and take a look at it, Pam.
Oh, I know the answer to that.
Not a debate.
Okay, it's not a debate. My apologies.
So this is my question. You said this, the function is for three months of the year, is that right? Is that correct?
I believe that would be the period that most of the students...
Pam, could you sit down, please?
Yeah, can we have one person at the podium, please?
This is primarily a summer opera company. That's when the kids come in.
So will the lights be gone for the rest of the year, or just a very few for safety reasons?
We hadn't explored that specifically. We certainly can. But if it's gonna be used as office space, which is the administrative use in the back, it may be important to have a certain number of lights available so that people can get in and out of the building.
Well, probably be more used during the day than at night for administration, I would think.
I would expect.
So will it just be all dark for the remainder of the year if the administration is using it even twelve months of the year during the day? Maybe five o'clock it gets dark, so there would be some... maybe five o'clock it gets dark, so there would be some lighting. And then is there no lighting at all for the rest of the year? Or do you have to have some for, you know, just for safety reasons?
I would expect it would be appropriate to have some lights for safety purposes.
And vandalism.
Well, that's what I mean, safety of the buildings, safety of, mhm. That's, I mean, because during the darkest of the days, that's going to have the most impact, I think, on the, on the neighbors. So, I hope, you know, you'll work with them and, because you want happy neighbors surrounding you.
I just have one other, if we're talking about maybe eliminating some light close to the pond, between Area Five and Area Three, there is an existing path that goes through the woods there. I'm wondering if there's a way to abandon that path and make it run closer to the new structure so that the lighting is further away from the pond and closer to the building. You might be able to just use the lights from the building to illuminate that section of the path. Because that would give you quite a bit of more, give you.
Sorry, Mr. Leary, are you referring to this section?
Uh, yes, yeah. Where it says existing path?
Yep.
If that path was just abandoned and you ran it closer to the building, I think it would be more functional if it was closer to the building.
Could you come up, because we can't hear you?
I'm not totally positive here, but I, it's an existing path. And we're leaving quite a bit of the existing vegetation in there. It might, you might run into some conservation.
So, here's our A-zone for conservation.
I don't see why you would, because you're just going to abandon it.
So, A-zone is over here.
And you can abandon in an ancient way as long as you provide access someplace else.
We'll be taking out veg, existing vegetation that we were going to leave, and then we'd have to replant that, I mean.
Okay, I don't see any vegetation alongside the building where it says Area Five. It says gravel, there's gravel there. I mean, I've walked through here, I've been through here. And it's pretty dense. Because this is all going to be excavated where the new structure is.
So, I understand, are you talking about bringing the path down here?
I, I can't see what, it's, it's, it's over here, if.
Are you saying to bring it down here?
Yes. Well, no, if, if, you have the loop behind student housing. You just extend that over and then run it up beside the building. Yeah. You're just cutting off the long leg of that path. And running, running it up alongside the building.
The purpose being to take the lighting away?
To take the lighting away from the pond and, and leave what's there, because it's.
Okay, so I think we probably, we need to wrap this up. We need an extension. And most likely through October, because the next meeting, Cory, we'd have to see them, that hopefully they would have some changes in mind, is September twenty-fourth, that we could put them on. But, September twenty-fourth is their deadline, so post haste to get that extension into the office.
Yep.
Okay. The problems that came up tonight had to do mostly with lighting and the Kukula. So those have to be worked on and solved in one way. We're, we're moving on.
I just wanted to make a request that if, is there a way to have one lighting plan so that you can see what the lights are on the building as well as the lights that are alongside the building? Because they're, right now, they're two different things. And if there's three different types of lights on the front of the building, if you, each one might be a small wattage, but if you add them together, each, each combination of three is about thirty watts of light. And I just thought it'd be nice to have a lighting plan that shows everything, that's all.
All together now.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So I think you all have been taking notes and you understand where we're coming from on this. So, hopefully we'll see some progress by.
Just, just quickly, since we're talking so much lighting, I count almost fifty new lights being on the outside of the building. I think that if they want to do that, they should show us what the existing lights are on the other building, the types. I think they've done very well by doing the dark sky and keeping it down and not creating a loom. But when they talked about a floodlight that goes from the house and comes up fifty feet, how many more floodlights are on the side? I would like to see the whole thing because I think it impacts it. And I'd like to not just say, well, we, we don't have to talk about that floodlight because it's already there.
Well, we may have.
But if they haven't, they want us to approve fifty new exterior lights on the side of the building, maybe we should be talking about all the light.
But I don't think that's in our purview. We can only talk about what we are seeing here for the new. I'm not sure.
Well, I think they got too many.
Okay, thank you. We're moving on, creation of design standards in conjunction with the Falmouth zoning bylaw. And you will all remember this contextual design on Cape Cod, which we rather liked. But what we're looking at is adding solar to that. And so I asked if Cory would put something together that got sent out. And this would be either eleven B. Let's see, I'll see where somewhere on this stuff I have. But what we're looking at is trying to work with this, modify it so that it becomes a separate section, which is what we indicated we were interested in. But probably also under that, I thought I had it marked here. It's on page thirty-two. Incorporate energy efficient or green architecture in the design. So the first part is all architecture. But we thought we should add more specific with solar lighting. Because we're tending to go that way as a town.
Solar lighting, I'm confused about that.
I'm sorry, solar panel.
Solar panel, sorry.
Sorry.
I understand now.
Okay, and if you look at the first two paragraphs, that's kind of what we're looking at to modify, to put it in here as a separate, either a separate section or a subordinate section. So it becomes eleven A and eleven B. And then these are all examples of where things are used, this sort of thing. I'm really not asking you tonight to have any discussion unless you choose to do so. But Cory did put this together and sent it out. Do you want to have any discussion on it tonight or not?
No.
Thank you, John.
Yeah, I really don't either. I think it's something that we need to digest.
That's dense.
It is dense. It's a lot of dense information.
I think we need a presentation on it to, you know, so.
We've had a lot of presentations.
But just on the solar aspect.
Yeah, but we've had quite a lot of presentations and Cory did look up. You can go and look at these different towns.
I mean, honestly, I'm not ready to provide any sort of presentation for you. I, you know, I put this together last minute, I've been away for a while, so. This is something for you to consider. There's not a lot of precedent in Massachusetts in terms of solar design on site review, site plan review. So, the only thing I could really find was how to orientate the building or a lot when you're working with a subdivision to maximize your solar capacity. You know, there are other considerations, screening equipment, that would come up in terms of site plan review for, for your solar panels or in the, in the actual, the stuff that produces electricity, the, the utility boxes and whatnot that are attached to the solar panels, like, how would you screen that as part of site plan review? These are things you need to consider. And I think we need to, I need to invest a little more time in, to provide something more clear for you. You know, I was asked to put this together by Tom to provide to you, to actually have a look at and have a discussion with. And, and honestly, there's not a lot of design review when it comes to solar throughout the country either. It's more of like a regula, regulatory thing, which you guys already have with your, your overlay district, where you have setbacks, where the solar panels are supposed to be located signage. So there's a lot of things to consider here tonight, but also how, how you want this presented to you. Right now, it's, yeah, it's kind of a jumble of things, kind of cut and paste, put together for you to review, but I think you need a little more time to digest it.
Oh, I think so.
Frankly, myself too, so.
I think so as well.
Yeah.
So I don't know whether we want to bring this up at the next meeting or not. I would say we're going to be jammed at the next meeting, so I think this is for contemplation right now.
Can I just have one question?
Yes.
Is this in regards to residential subdivisions or commercial development or both?
It could be for both, yes.
Either or?
Either or, yeah.
Or both? Or none of the above?
Right.
A, B, or C.
Okay, thank you.
Well, mostly for, you know, site plan reviews, generate a commercial development for you guys.
Yeah.
But something you could also consider for your subdivisions, which you don't really get to see much of nowadays, but.
Right. So that's, this is all part of the discussion, how we want to handle it, if we want to handle it.
I for one have a hard time mandating solar on somebody's building. But having criteria to make it available, I have, I have no.
Yeah, this is not a mandate, these, you know, it's recommendations.
I understand.
Yeah, this would never be a mandate.
If it goes into subdivision regulations, then it becomes a mandate, so.
Yeah, and this, this wouldn't be incorporated in your subdivision regulations at all, at this point in time.
Thank you.
Okay, changes to the Falmouth subdivision regulations, no, we're not doing that tonight. Okay, because Tom isn't here, he wants to be involved in that. Seven ninety-seven Main Street LLC, the site plan review, we do have a decision. That somehow I buried here in all this stuff, please.
That's the motion.
Yeah, well, there are two parts to that, because remember, we had decided that we didn't necessarily want everything red.
Right.
So this is the motion and this is the full decision. And I'm assuming you all would like to carry through with that, so I asked.
The abbreviated version?
The abbrev, I asked that Michaela do an abbreviated version of it.
Now, wait a minute.
Yeah, no, this is the motion.
Yeah.
And then these are the findings.
Okay.
I'm sorry, oh dear. That's not right.
The conditions.
Yeah, where is that?
The conditions are on the back.
Here. This is the one to read.
Where it says mo.
Motion with the conditions.
Motion.
Motion, conditions.
Yes, and the conditions, yes, that's it.
Okay, so we don't, so we're not reading the findings, then?
No, we're not reading findings.
Okay. So, because I'm looking at two, two motions that are the same with the.
Yeah, no.
So, motion that the planning board votes to approve the application of seven ninety-seven Main Street LLC under Article thirty-nine, site plan review of the zoning bylaw for the construction of a mixed-use structure with a forty-four seat restaurant to be applied as either forty-four indoor seats or thirty-two indoor seats and twelve outdoor seats on the first floor and three residential units above as depicted on site in architectural plans entitled proposed restaurant and residential apartments at seven ninety-seven Main Street, Falmouth, Mass. O two five four oh, prepared by Chubak Engineering Group, P.C., dated January seventeenth, two thousand nineteen, with latest revision of July ninth, two thousand nineteen, scale as noted, twelve sheets with the conditions. Conditions, one, the plan shall be constructed as approved. Any changes shall be reviewed by the planning board at a public meeting to determine if a modification of this decision is necessary. Pursuant to Section two forty-one eighty-three B of the zoning bylaw, no permit for full or partial occupancy shall be issued until the planning board is satisfied that the conditions of this approval have been met. Upon substantial completion of the project in accordance with Section two forty-one thirty, one ninety-three C, the applicant will be required to submit an as-built plan for review by the board, planning department staff, prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit. Two, the applicant shall obtain an approval, an approved driveway permit or street opening permit and post any required bond with the engineering division prior to start of construction. The applicant shall complete the work as approved by the engineering division in the approved permits. Three, appropriate permission to create and use parking spaces, a parking landscape buffer, and locate a dumpster off of the applicant's parcel shall be provided to the planning department and the engineering division. The applicant shall provide an executed shared parking agreement along cycle Ave as well as the easement to allow access to what, forty-seven B dash oh nine dash fourteen C dash zero zero two two across seven ninety-seven Main Street, forty-seven B dash zero nine dash fourteen B dash zero nineteen, as a condition of the board's site plan approval. Four, the applicant will need to submit revised plans addressing the engineering divisions opened and new comments pertaining to the submission of revised plans. See referral date, April seventeenth, two thousand nineteen. Five, the landscaping shall be installed in accordance with the above referenced plans and shall be maintained in a healthy state. Six, the applicant shall provide bike racks in at least one location revised plans will reflect this request. Seven, the restaurant shall consist of a total of forty-four seats to be utilized as either forty-four indoor seats or thirty-two indoor seats and twelve outdoor seats for a total of forty-four seats. Eight, any breach or default of this agreement by seven ninety-seven Main Street or its successes or signs which continues for more than ten days after the sending of written notice of such breach or default shall entitle Falmouth eight fifteen at its sole option to terminate the easement by written notice to seven ninety-seven Main Street with a copy of said notice being sent to the same, at the same time to the Falmouth Town Plan and the filing of a notice of termination with the Bonneville Registry District of the Land Court. Nine, if the easement agreement is terminated or lapses for any reason, use of the first floor shall be reduced or eliminated at the discretion of the planning board.
Let's get a second on it and we'll have discussion.
Second.
John?
I just have one question regarding condition number two. It's very common to obtain a driveway permit or street opening permit and pay a fee for, for that. I don't think I've ever seen a bond be posted or a driveway permit or street opening permit. I'm not, I don't know where this came from. I know you have to pay a fee to get the curb cut, but I can't understand the idea of a bond. I don't know what that means.
I have no idea.
I don't mind leaving it in here, but I don't want it to become a, a future condition without some explanation why it's here.
Sure, it was most likely stated in the engineering division's referral, but I'm going to have to look into that as to clarity.
I, I can understand a planning board requiring a bond on something. I can't understand the engineering department having a bond on something. And, and on this in particular, so.
Yeah.
But I'm not going to object to it, I just want to, I want a clarification.
Question for future. Exactly. So, if it's not necessary, we don't want it to appear in the future, yeah?
And if it is necessary, I'd like to know why.
Absolutely. Any other comments on this? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Are there any committee reports tonight? Nope. Okay. Planning Board Policies and Procedures Manual, we're continuing that to September twenty-fourth because Tom wants to be here. And what we just did in truncating the decision, there is a full-blown decision.
Yeah.
But anybody can go and see that if they wish in the planning office. But by truncating that, that's probably going to be one of our very first actions is to put that into our procedures, so it becomes an official. Okay, update on the nine sixteen nineteen meeting with the Board of Selectmen. You will see in your folder, Megan wrote a note saying, okay, fine, we won't do it as a joint meeting. But you will remember that we all agreed that we were going to go and attend the meeting so we could hear the wastewater presentation, which is critical, I think, for our understanding of what's going on, the future of the town, our zoning and permitting. I think it's critical that we do hear that. And then it is very likely to become a subject of a joint meeting, so that we can discuss it. There is no date yet set for a joint meeting. Hopefully it will be sometime during November after town meeting. Are there any announcements? Okay. General correspondence, the purple folder is right here.
We have the same ones, yeah.
Yeah, well, this is just from the Oceanographic saying that they've sent their pro, project onto the commission for the development of regional impact. There's a letter in here from Sharon Reed in regard to Galetta Drive, one ninety Galetta Drive. She says, I have reviewed the plans for the property, seen it as built and have discussed it with the owners. She thinks it's a benefit to the neighborhood. I would suggest that if anybody wants to read this, it's in the office. I would suggest that if anybody wants to read this, it's in the office to read. Unless you want me to read the whole thing into the record, I can certainly do that.
Yeah, we'd like you to do that.
Okay, it's short. So, the first paragraph, "I believe that this project as-built is a benefit to the neighborhood and in line with the spirit and intent of the accessory apartment bylaw. This project will allow for a younger generation to remain in Falmouth despite housing costs and for longtime residents to retain their own space and autonomy. Even with the changes to the plans, this property retains the design of a single-family residence. I find that I might be in need for an accessory apartment for my elderly mother who does not want to go into a nursing home but needs regular assistance with daily tasks. This bylaw is very important to many residents of Falmouth and the more difficult the process, the more discouraged homeowners will be to apply. I urge the boards to consider the intent of the bylaw to let seniors age in place. The owners of one ninety Galetta Drive are helping their children secure housing as well as planning for their own future. I am in support of this project both as originally planned and as actually constructed. I would urge the town boards to approve the changes as well." This is authored by Sharon Reed, seventy-nine Caravelle Drive, Hatchville. Okay, the next one...
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Did she say that she talked to the owners? Isn't that what you read?
Yeah.
You talked to the next door homeowner?
Somebody, they don't, they're not neighbors?
The concern I had with it was...
No, I, I know them and, and I, I know the purpose for...
I know you can answer that, but... The concern I had with it is very different than what was approved by the planning board. The concept of providing housing for family members is a good concept. That fits in what we're doing. But what they had done was something very different.
And that's going to come before us, so we shouldn't even bring that up. There's something dated here, September fourth, care of Kelly Cardoza, and you know, she's a Cape Club. In cle- enclosed, please find the final certificate of compliance for Cape Club redevelopment, one twenty-five Falmouth Woods Road. Should you record this decision, please forward a copy to our office. And this is Lisa Dillon, acting commission clerk. Oh, this is all just background information here, too, on it. Yes, John?
Can I make two comments on this, please?
Sure.
This is mostly for the general public. So, this is the Cape Cod Commission's certificate of compliance for the residential subdivision, which is twenty-eight residential units. I'm not sure why the rest of the development isn't included in this decision, because they're going to do rental units up above in the future. I'm sure it was part of the whole application, because they have the shared septic system, et cetera. I don't know why it's not part of this decision, but I do want to just read one little bit here. And, and part of the decision, this is from the Cape Cod Commission, "The applicant has paid to the Barnstable County Treasurer in care of the commission four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in affordable housing funds." So, that was part of the fee structure for them to get this approved. They also, this, this applicant also contributed a substantial amount of money to the town of Falmouth for open space purchase. Because it's not read out loud, I want to...
Oh, yes.
I think it's very important.
That they know that this is what's going on. Thank you, John.
And I would like to find out why the rest of the development isn't part of this. It had to have been approved at the same time.
Can't answer that, don't know.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for letting the community know that, making sure that they know. Let's see, general correspondence, future agenda items.
I think we got a full plate, myself.
So do I, okay. Next meeting, it's listed there, September sixteen, cross that out. But do note that we are, we've obligated ourselves.
Pat, one thing I did ask, you wanted to have a discussion with the board whether, remember I was pushing to make some presentations on Form-based code and start doing outreach? And you said you wanted to ask the whole board. I want, I would like that on the agenda, so the board does approve of that, so we can, so I could get started.
Okay, I think we should put that.
It's really short, but Pat recommended that you all weigh in, it needs to be on the agenda. But I'd like it to be on a future agenda item that that comes up.
Well, because we're wanting to get some funding also.
Right, we're running out of time to do the outreach.
September twenty-fourth is our next regular meeting. We need to vote the truncated warrant articles. And I think you, I think you were sent that. The only one that is going to be on the warrant, and I'm bringing this up for point of information, is the height of the buildings. The other one, the finance office says, no, 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 we don't do it the way you're proposing to do it. For this particular one, we go as a line item. And so, that one for the, the funding for the Form-based code would be line item.
Oh.
And you'll see all that in...
So, it's just in the budget, it's not on a warrant article?
It's in the budget. Town meeting does vote it, but it's not a warrant article. What was the other one, there was a third one?
That's different, I, I thought it was...
Plank on it right now, but don't worry about it, because this is the only thing that we're, we're doing, is that for the warrant article. The other thing that we need to talk about is that to vote on the town meeting articles, we would need, excuse me, the hearing on the town meeting articles would be October first, or it could be early in the day on October eighth, because that's Yom Kippur. And I prefer we do the meeting on October first. We may very well have to have an early meeting just to vote these few things to the warrant on the eighth, you know, before six o'clock. And I think that's doable if we need to do that. Are you in agreement with that or not?
I will be at Mass Pioneer from, for eight hours that day.
On the eighth?
On... No, on October first.
On October first.
Yeah, you're talking October first.
Yeah, October first, definitely. But then we have to vote them to the warrant. And so, the question is, what do you want to do on that? And we can discuss that at our next meeting, too. So, think about that and look at your calendars.
When you're talking about the eighth, you're talking about a quick, one of those quick meetings that we...
It'd be one of the quick meetings we just voted to.
Yeah, that we, okay, yeah, yeah.
Oh, October, I'm so sorry.
October, yeah.
What day of the week is that, is October eighth?
October eighth is Tuesday.
October eighth is a Tuesday.
Oh, yeah, see, I'm...
And Tom suggests that we might want to meet a little bit, like, five o'clock, real quick, to vote these, to the warrant.
Oh, okay, evening, because I'm, I'm...
Yeah, it would be that kind of thing. He didn't put the time on it, but...
So, just so you know, the holiday begins at sundown.
Yeah.
On Tuesday.
That's why I'm suggesting five. We'd have to be out by six. Well, sundown's a little bit later than that, but...
Right, I mean, the, the town, there are no meetings taking place.
At all?
No.
Okay.
Julian said no meetings on those.
That I, this is the first I've heard of that, okay.
For Rafa Shana and for Yom Kippur.
Okay. So, I don't know what we're going to do as far as voting this to the warrant, unless we have a real quick meeting somehow, somewhere.
We can discuss it next time, right?
We are certainly going to have to, yes. Okay. Want to bang the gavel?
Yep.
Let's do it, Jern.
Meeting adjourned.